All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Mills River Planning Board meeting for the month of June. And this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you will please join me in standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Do we have any adjustments at this time to our agenda? Okay, before we continue on to approval of the minutes, I just want to take a personal moment and just say that, as most of you know, our friend Cheryl Danoski intended to be here tonight to finish her tenure on the planning board. And she is unable to do so as her mother Cleo Jones passed away on Friday. So I personally will miss her on the planning board. She and I were appointed just months apart. And I will miss her wise and reflective and balanced contributions to our discussions here on the planning board. But one thing I know is that Cheryl's service to Mills River was a legacy to her mom Cleo's service to Mills River. Cleo was known to have gone door to door seeking signatures on petitions to get Mills River Incorporated in the very early days. And she also served as a library volunteer. So tonight we honor Cleo's memory. And we also say thank you, Cheryl, and we will miss you as well. Okay, all of you received an electronic version of the minutes from May the 3rd. If there are no changes, I would entertain a motion to approve those. Okay, Mr. Aller made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Can we have a second for Mr. Abbott? All in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes will pass unanimously. Do we have any public comment this evening?
I've received none.
No. And we have no old business, so we're moving right along and we are going to jump into the new business tonight, which is consideration of the application for a major subdivision of Mills River Crossing Phase Four M dash twenty-one dash oh one. So at this time, I will let Mr. Malachek give us a quick overview of what that looks like.
Thank you. Yeah, per usual, I'm going to do a quick review of my staff report for those listening online. So on April 25th, the town, oh, I've got the wrong staff report here. Let me check with, do the planning board members have the subdivision application in front of them? Rezoning? We have the incorrect materials, but. Okay. Can we? Okay. Can we bother you for a two-minute recess? Thank you. All right. Thanks, everyone, for your patience while we got the correct materials. So just to summarize the case for those listening online, the town received a major residential subdivision application on December 6th of 2021 for the subject property, which has an approximate address of sixty-one hundred Boylston Highway. No address is currently assigned by Henderson County. So the proposed subdivision and development plan will add nineteen new single-family lots to the existing portion of the Mills River Crossing subdivision on the north side of Boylston Highway, which are Phases One and Two. And there would be an extension of Milana Drive through vacant Lot Thirty of Mills River Crossing Phase Two, which will connect to a new road, Victoria Hill Drive, where all the new proposed lots will have access from. Just a quick overview, staff reviewed the plans and sent a town review memo with comments on January 13th of 2022. The applicant submitted revised plans on May 6th of this year. There are still outstanding items that need to be addressed, which are described in further detail in the staff report. So as the development plan is presented, currently it's not compliant with town zoning subdivision and watershed stormwater requirements. But the applicant has requested to be before the planning board at this meeting so they can stay on schedule with the development. So again, the process is that the planning board's role is to provide additional oversight for staff, ensure all development standards and codes are met for the town. This property is on mixed use, which allows for single-family home development and subdivisions as per our subdivision ordinance. And I'll end it there. The review comments that are outstanding are basically included in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions about those.
Okay, my first question to you, Mr. Malachek, would be, have there been any additions to this application at all since Tuesday?
No, review comments from the last version were sent to the applicant in the last week or two weeks with the Memorial Day holiday, both I was out of town on vacation and then the engineer was out of town. So there were review comments that were delivered in that period, but no changes have been made today.
Okay.
And I should just state also that the applicant is here. And so I think at some point, if they want to get up and speak, that's at the discretion of the chair.
Okay, is there anyone on the the planning board at this time that would like to start this discussion or I'm happy to jump in there and start it if not?
Well, let me first of all say packet that was sent to us. The link where I could really print it out all of this stuff, I couldn't get it to print, I'll have to say. But I tried reading as much as I could on the on the screen on my computer. But it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a lot of things that should be done at this time that's not complete. Am I correct?
Yeah, there are outstanding items that still need to be addressed. And again, the options before this board are to either approve the subdivision with the conditions that all those items be addressed, including the variance for the sidewalk requirement to table this item to the next meeting in August, so the applicant can address those, or to deny the plan since, as it's submitted, it's not compliant.
Okay, so I'm just going to put it out. Do you want to jump in first or?
I was wondering, there's like six or seven outstanding items. They're not listed. They're in the document that we got, but they're not listed. We have here, there are six or seven items that are outstanding.
Approximately, there's about two or three stormwater review comments from our contracted stormwater engineer. And then, yeah, about four comments that I had.
Okay, are are those issues substantive enough that they can't be addressed, all of them, and satisfactorily completed by our next meeting? Do you have an idea?
I would defer to the applicant for that and how they could address those in that time period, but I've seen it done before. I don't see an issue with that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You certainly may come right on up. If you'll come up to the microphone, please. Do we know if that microphone is on?
Hello? Good early evening. My name is Brad Howell. I'm with Advantage Civil Engineering and representing Biggles Construction on this particular project. And Mike, I don't have those list of comments in front of me. I apologize. But again, just to kind of reiterate what you said, there's about seven comments. And I have, we have reviewed those comments and they're all, we feel easily, you know, we'll be able to accomplish those seven comments, not a problem. The one outstanding is the variance request for the sidewalk. Other than that, the rest of them are pretty, you know, there was one comment that, you know, thirty thousand square feet is the minimum lot size, which we've already addressed all of that, and that has been accomplished. I think the surveyor maybe submitted his preliminary plat before he got my revisions. So it showed one lot at like twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven square feet. It's already been adjusted. That comment has already been addressed. There was another comment regarding the again, I don't have it in front of me, something about the streams, the rivers up around Lot Six.
Yes, the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Right, we contracted with Clearwater Environmental out of, I believe they're out of Asheville. They went on to do a stream and wetland delineation of the entire property. And I have a copy of their map here where they delineate any streams or wetlands. And no streams for Clearwater Environmental were found on that northern property, just north of Boylston Highway, and I can provide
That's fine, but
A copy of that report.
We identify a perennial stream as one that appears on the seven and a half minute USGS topo map, and there is one through there. So, I mean, I think that that standard could still apply.
Even with an environmental firm coming in doing a delineation.
I mean, I just go off of what's in our code, so we would at least require the buffer, but.
I'm not opposed to that if Mr. Malachek has that. And early what you gave us does not have those bulleted comments. We didn't get the backside. So we got the first page and the third page and did not get the second page. I think it must be like a full moon and there's a front coming through and all the things. Yeah, all the things.
Yeah, that's your word.
Yeah, right there.
To continue, stormwater easements need to be added. It's as simple as placing them on the plat, you know, so they can be recorded as such. It's not not a red flag for us at all. We already addressed the second one, the thirty thousand square feet minimum. That has already been addressed. Stormwater review comments we just received. Did we just receive those from Michael Goforth?
I, yeah, I sent them to you, I think. Last day or two, you were out of the office.
Okay, right. Yeah, yeah. So this is our second set of comments coming from Mr. Goforth, which would probably just be pinpointing about the stormwater easements as such. Let's see, the development plan, the stream disturbance from the Army Corps, that's what we were just talking about, where we received a delineation from Clearwater Environmental stating that they're they didn't determine that those were actually streams. And then the last one is the sidewalk, which the variance we will be applying for. So I guess in summary, all the comments, we feel like easily addressable. The variance regarding the sidewalk would be kind of the only outstanding that we'll have to wait until August for the meeting to be heard for that one. So I guess with that being said, we would very much like to see like an approval with condition upon that at this particular meeting.
I think one of the questions that was secondary to Mr. Foster's question was that the timeline on that, you're able to meet those conditions within thirty days?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here now. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here now. I've I've been listening and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put out, I'd I've read through everything and I've read through it very thoroughly and um, the first thing I want to say is that we as a planning board have in the past set a certain precedent by saying bring something to us that's ready to go. And there have been other people who did not do so and said, bring it to us when it's ready to go. Um. You you tell us tonight that these things are easily addressable. Then why aren't they addressed? That's kind of where I'm coming from. You know, you got, you got the feedback in January. These are things that need to be addressed. And though some, some progress has been made, they have not been completely addressed. And this is not your first rodeo. This is phase four. You know, you've been through this process three prior times and you know what the expectation is. So for us, you know, we're sitting here listening to this. Your time is valuable. You've had to wait. Our time is valuable as well. We expect something to come before us, ready to go and this as it is submitted to us is not in compliance with Mills River um ordinances. And I just from a personal perspective, and I have no idea what the rest of the people on this planning board think. I'm assuming that when you're seeking a variance for the sidewalks, that you are hoping to not have to put the sidewalks or the walking trails in. Is that a correct assumption? Yes, okay. That to me is very disappointing. And you you're tipping beyond a hundred homes in these, this subdivision. It's all Mills River Crossing in my interpretation and you're wanting to not have to put in sidewalks for these one hundred families that have purchased properties in your subdivisions. Yes, ma'am. The one that says talk.
Thanks. We good? Okay. Um, I'd just like to remind the board that um the Mills River ordinance does allow an applicant to request a variance uh for specific provisions of the ordinance. Therefore, you know, the fact that uh Mills River has or the uh Big Hills has decided to request a variance uh should not be held against them because it's precisely what the ordinance permits them to do. Thank you.
And yes, the ordinance does permit you to do that, but we can disagree with a purpose or your intent of doing so. And I respect, you're a business and I respect your your desire to do so. Um.
Madam Chair, I believe that um if if I can kind of interject or say what I I think you're trying to say is that we can be disappointed and hold that separate from our decision as to whether or not the plans are complete, which may be a very easy decision since everyone, uh, it has been said several times the plans are not complete, which is separate from our disappointment that sidewalk won't be provided. Is that, is that kind of what you're getting at?
You are correct. And 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 the the sidewalk portion of that is one thing that cannot be completed within thirty days, we know, because it can't go before the Board of Adjustment until August. Um. So that that's just kind of where I'm at with this. Um. I would like for us to uphold what we as a planning board have done in the past and and make sure that when we have applications come before us, they are complete to move them on.
If I'm not mistaken, we can um table this indefinitely. Can we not?
There's a, in the subdivision code, it allows the planning board to table an item for sixty days just for additional consideration, but that's if the plans are complete. So there's a provision in the subdivision code that says if the planning board sees the plans as not complete, that sixty day time period is not invoked. So I wouldn't say indefinitely, but but yeah, the sixty day time period would not apply because the plans are incomplete.
Can I ask why you don't want to do the sidewalks?
My own, okay. Um, the motive behind not wanting to uh do sidewalks is not relevant to whether the application satisfies uh the subdivision standards. We will be speaking to the Board of Adjustment about uh, the rationale behind not wanting to lay sidewalks, but I will preview, preview for you all and uh my clients can further elaborate. They are more than happy to lay sidewalks in the forthcoming uh undeveloped portions of Mills River Crossing. They cannot go back and lay sidewalks in those portions that have already been built. In fact, all of the homeowners that live in the current developments have indicated to our client that they do not want sidewalks. They don't want their driveways to be ripped up. They don't want their utilities to be interrupted. So Mills River Crossing is not at all opposed to sidewalks. It's just the extreme hardship of having to uh go back and do that retroactively. Uh, but I do want to say again, that is completely irrelevant to whether the subdivision application uh meets the requirements of the ordinance. I also uh just want to remind the board that um they can condition approval upon granting of the variance. If the variance is not granted, the approval falls away. It is null. It can also condition approval on uh Big Hills uh satisfying the other outstanding comments uh regarding stormwater within thirty days. If it fails to do so, the approval also uh falls away. That would be an efficient way to handle this matter so that we don't have to gather again. Uh, it provided that you all uh agree that all other aspects of the application are sufficient. Thank you.
Can I ask you another question before you leave? Did your clients know when they started with phase one that when they went beyond the one hundred resident threshold, that this would be a requirement they would have to deal with or address?
No, because uh phase one was approved without any mention of laying a sidewalk. Therefore, they were under the impression that uh, it was being treated as a separate subdivision. But again, this is not the appropriate forum to discuss it. We're seeking a variance for the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, I also want to invite Mr. Howell, if you all will, will hear him again, uh, to explain why the outstanding stormwater comments have not been addressed to date.
Uh, yeah, and I wanted to, if I may, uh, touch base on the uh, what you were saying earlier about this. Um, this is our first. Well, I'll just let that go. Uh, like I said, that some of these comments have already been addressed. A lot size it's been addressed. About the stream, we had to wait on the delineation report to come back from Clearwater. That's why it was not addressed earlier. It takes time to get these reports. That's why that comment's up there now and it wasn't addressed earlier. Um, the stormwater easements, you know, we we first got our first stormwater comments back. We had to resize all of our stormwater measures, the BPMs, if you will, which you know, and once you resize those things, you don't know how big they're gonna grow and which direction they're gonna grow until we get those finalized. Then we can determine exactly how the stormwater access easements need to lie on the property. It's kind of like a domino effect. You gotta figure out one thing after, before you can, I can't put easements on a property until I know where the stormwater system is even gonna be. We designed that, submitted to Mr. Um, Goforth. Once he approves it, then we can actually, actually you can figure out where these stormwater easements need to be. So it's not like we just forgot to do it. You know what I mean? These, there's always some, these comments have to come like in order of approval from the uh various review staff. Um, and that's why there's, actually, I think there's like six comments that are left un- unaddressed. But most, if I don't, I can't remember all six of them, just off the top of my head, but I believe they're all addressed or can be within easily within thirty days. As we wait, you know, for the the sidewalk. Yes, the stream delineation. Stormwater review comments, the lot size is five and the stormwater easements.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
That's, um, I think one of the things that we would like to make clear as a board and and please correct me, my other board members of, if I'm speaking out of turn here, but it the due process and the um amount of time and care that's put into any of these processes and we know that you have that and in place as well for you is the whole point is that our position as a board and our processes aboard is, is that once everything's complete, it just, that's a natural process. It rolls. If it meets the criteria, then it's automatically. And I say automatically, obviously we vote on it, but once it meets the criteria, it's not our position to not go forward with something. However, our position has been as a board, and I'm restating this, uh, has been if it doesn't meet the criteria as set forth, that we ask you to do that before um voting on it. Am I summarizing correctly?
Thank you, Ar.
I agree. Uh, at this point, um, I don't think we can say that the criteria has been met. So I like you say, we have two or three options. We could, I guess, say no. Uh, realizing that that is just a recommendation to council.
Okay, it would be, it's not a recommendation.
It's not even a recommendation.
That we, if if we, if we deny, then they will have to resubmit, which they can.
I would not be in favor at this point.
Any other comments, additions? Nope. Well, I'm just gonna jump in there and then, you know, we might as well have a motion and a vote and we'll see where that goes. I am going to make the motion that the um subdevelop, subdivision development plan as submitted be denied because it does not it is not in compliance with our zoning subdivision and watershed stormwater standards.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So that would be unanimous, six to zero. What that does mean is this can be resubmitted and it can be resubmitted as soon as you want to resubmit that. There is no contingencies on that. Correct, Mr. Malicek?
Correct, there's no waiting period.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to additional items in our agenda tonight. Um, do you have any items from town council for us? Uh, maybe you want to explain the, the gift boxes around the table?
Yeah, so in in front of everyone's desk is a, a little gift box. This was distributed to all our volunteer boards just as a token of the town's appreciation for your time and service um to the town of Mills River. So enjoy them. Keep, keep your uh cold drinks cold in the summer.
Okay, so I also wanted to note on your, the upcoming dates, even though it's listed at the bottom of the page that we have a July fifth meeting. That meeting should not be there in our original adopted calendar in January. We did not have a July fifth meeting, so that's a mistake. We will not be meeting in the month of July. That means our next meeting will be August the second. Um, hopefully at town council's meeting on Thursday of this week, we will be getting an appointment to fill Cheryl's position, so that person would join us in August. So any updates from council?
Uh, no specific updates. I was just gonna mention that um, the AV upgrades to this room should also be taking place in July. So hopefully, this will be the last time you will be using these microphones and I will have these cords everywhere. Um, so we're really excited for that.
Again, new microphones?
Yes, new microphones, new cameras, cameras in the ceiling.
Great.
Um, you know, the whole nine yards, so we're going.
I did suggest that some time ago.
It was you, Jim. Yeah.
It's all, it's all about you, Jim. I'm telling you.
I got a, a general question, probably has nothing to do with what we're, we're talking about tonight. Maybe somebody can answer it because it keeps coming up. Uh, most developments and all have homeowners associations. And I was asked a question and and I know I was talking to someone from down in Georgia, I believe it was. And they said that uh, approval for homeowners association down there expire after a certain number of years and they have to reapply. Is that the case in North Carolina?
I do not know that. Um, but there is uh a general statute, state law that covers homeowners associations and restrictive covenants and the like. Um, I actually looked that up for a resident recently. Um, he was concerned about Mills River Crossing not handing over the homeowners association to the residents. Um, but the reason for that is because since they've applied for this expansion, technically the subdivision is still under development, which allows them to retain control. But to answer your question, I I don't know. Um, for the town code requirements for any major subdivision, we do require proof of at least restrictive cov- covenants or some HOA because we have what, you know, landscaping buffers that need to be maintained and and there needs to be proof that that will be maintained by an association. So there was, there was a lengthy, usually I don't include it, but just because of the complexity of the last case, there was a lengthy HOA document uh, at the end of your packet. Um, but but that is, that is a condition, you know, that that we do require. So I haven't always included it in the past, but for like the last subdivision, uh cottages at Roper Farm on Banner Farm Road, that was something that was submitted by them as well. It just wasn't included.
You did have a question and I thought this, I mean, and maybe I, I hope I'm not out of turn since they're out of the room now, but is there what stops us from telling an applicant like that? You haven't got your stuff together.
Just did.
Nothing, nothing, yeah.
But I mean, what stops you guys from doing that? So you'll never have to see it.
I I I expressed to them, um, without going to too much detail, I mean, they've had my review comments since mid-January and only submitted in May. And then, you know, we had Memorial Day weekend, the engineer was out of town for a while. I was out of town for a while. Um, and also just remember our, our stormwater engineer that we contract with, um, he's a, you know, has his own farm and has his own book of work. So I mean, I I I make applicants aware that usually the quickest he can turn around to review is three weeks. And then with my load of work, really the quickest I can do is two to three weeks. But usually I tell people a month and that's why we have the standard requirement that applications be submitted a month in advance of the meeting at which they would be considered. But to answer your question, in my role as zoning administrator, you know, uh, my goal is to always have complete plans come before this board and have everything in compliance. I think with the cottages at Roper Farm on Banner Farm Road, there was one stormwater comment and then I think one thing that had to be adjusted on the plat. And then the condition of approval was that they have sediment erosion control permit and the Army Corps permit. And before I released approval, which what I do is I actually type up a letter of approval and then stamp all the documents as approved, all those items were provided to me. Um, in this case, honestly, the, the comments from the stormwater engineer and my comments were only sent a week ago. Um, and and again, I can't speak for them, but I was just told based on their timeline, they did not want to wait.
Yeah, but my understanding, and even as we read that and heard discussions tonight, is that timeline is still affected by the variance, the desire for a variance, so they weren't gonna get anywhere anyways. I, it just was a, I, I.
You're correct.
Succinct.
The whole, the whole matter hinges on the sidewalk requirement and the variance and that would not be resolved until the August meeting.
So we haven't really slowed them down by not granting it tonight. They've, they still have to come get the variance and we're not interfering with that because it's a separate issue.
Their, their final approval will always, will hinge upon the variance at the August ninth meeting, no matter what.
They knew about the hundred homes when you go beyond that, that the sidewalks prior to, didn't they, before? This new mark that they bought.
I'll I'll agree with their attorney that. I I don't really want to go into that at this point, but I'll just say there's a document and it's in there.
Yeah, like in a packet.
And it's in the ordinance. Right, if you care to to find.
Yeah, sidewalk or no sidewalk, we didn't get a complete set of plans to look at. Sidewalk is totally separate.
Right. And and just just another comment that's related, but not. Exactly, the the fact that. In them needing to resubmit. One thing that I think will be beneficial is they will now fall under our new guidelines. That because this is a major subdivision, they will have to send notification to neighboring properties, correct?
I will do that for the town, but that's correct. Council approved that text amendment for major subdivision public notice requirements in February. And so, again, their original application was submitted in December before that requirement took place. Now, since they'll have to resubmit after that's taken effect is and is in our code, it will apply. So again, it's a posted sign and mailed notice to all adjacent property owners.
That does that does bring up, that's a good point brought up about if the plans don't show the sidewalk. Then we have the ability to deny those plans. The variance then would give them the option to. They then comply by having the variance. Is that how that works?
Correct. So in 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 my professional opinion, the lack of a sidewalk is actually one of the largest items that shows the plans are not in compliance because there is no variance. And actually, if you dig into our code. It actually states that a variant shall be applied for at the same time as the subdivision application, which obviously they did after the fact, but. So it's been submitted and accepted. The variance application is now in the hand of the town.
So the attorneys, when she asserted that that's a separate issue from what we're dealing with tonight, it's really not.
I think she was talking about the variance, the merits of the variance and the sidewalk itself.
But the sidewalk's not there on the plans. So the plans aren't compliant.
Yeah, the lack of a sidewalk on the submitted plans is within this board's discretion because again. You know, the role of this board, just like me, is to look at the text on in the code book and apply it, and their plans had no sidewalk and the code requires a sidewalk. And it's kind of black and white like that.
So do the plans then need to be resubmitted with the sidewalks included before we.
That's up to their discretion whether they want to. But.
Whether they want to.
Whether they want to include the sidewalk or not, but but the the next step would be that they submit a new application, that there will be a new case number. And then I assume or I hope the plans they submit will be updated, excuse me, based on everything, all the review comments already given. And then it would come back, you know, I would do a staff review, excuse me, and it would come back before this board. Now, whether that happens. Before the Board of, I mean, there is a possibility it could come back before this board on the August second meeting before the opportunity for a variance is heard.
But if they submit those plans with no sidewalk. And the variance request at the same time, we can review the plans. And if we choose to approve it, we approve it based on that variance being approved. The variance is not approved, then our is no longer.
That's correct. It would be the, yes, the the same implication. So if if they resubmit a new major subdivision application. And if sidewalks are not included, again, as the code reads now, it's still not compliant until a variance is secured.
So tonight, without that submittal of the variance, we were well within the rights to consider the sidewalk. And I apologize. For saying we weren't. Is is the variance that we weren't considering, they have the right to request a variance, but as of now, the plans are complete. And with no variance application, we don't know that we don't know that they're going to even request a variance. We don't have.
There there has been a variance application submitted paid as of last Friday.
Okay. Once the variance is approved. Who's to say the sidewalks are actually going to be installed? How does that work? And in, you know, six, eight, ten, twelve months, a year down, two years down the road, there's no sidewalks. What is the? Remedy for that?
So it would be considered a zoning violation, first of all. So the town has a couple of different recourses for that. One would be a violation for letter from me. With fines of up to fifty dollars a day.
To what? Correct. To get the.
Until until it's corrected or efforts shown. I mean, there are other options where you can actually do a stop work order, file an injunction in court. So it was so there are multiple remedies.
Is there a timeframe that the sidewalks are supposed to be installed during the process of the construction? Process?
It would be, and that was the other thing I was going to mention, so. Part of what's submitted to this board with any major subdivision is a preliminary plat. Which, as the engineer highlighted, one lot, the size was a little off and below our requirements. The preliminary plat, if this board approves a major subdivision and then the conditions are met. And I issue my letter of approval for the subdivision, that's stamped as an approved document. But lots cannot be sold. Or created with new tax ID PIN numbers until a final plat subdivision plat is filed. And signed off on by me and then again recorded with the Henderson County Register of Deeds. Now, there's something in the subdivision code that says. The town will not sign off on a final subdivision plat unless all but required infrastructure is installed. Being roads, utility lines, primarily water. And I would include sidewalks with road because even though it's for pedestrians, it's still transportation infrastructure. So. Long short, I would not sign the final plat to even sell the lot that would create lots to sell until that's installed. And if the developer wants it signed off on before it's installed, we require a subdivision bond. For a hundred and twenty-five percent of the value of all the improvements. So that's in the case of if the subdivision developer defaults. The town could take the bond and complete the improvements, at least so the lots are habitable.
So tagging on to that. Infrastructure has to be completed. Is that also the the infrastructure retroactive in the previous phases?
I probably don't have an answer for that, but the reason it applies to the previous phases is because. With every subdivision plat, and again, now it. The past practice was that it has to appear on the plat itself as a certificate of understanding. Signed by the owner that basically says. Improvements may need to be made to the subdivision. You know, if it's increased, if something changes, etc. And so that that was really what applied is that because the whole development over four phases is now at, I think, a hundred and fourteen lots. It trips that requirement and retroactively applies to all phases.
That clears mud? Sure.
But we state. Understanding what's something is.
Sure. So Mr. Wiggins has asked me to reiterate. As a planning board, generally speaking. Our role is to look at documents that are presented to us, applications for various projects. We have some pretty specific guidelines, boxes to be checked, if you will. And when those boxes are checked, that makes it very easy for us to say. Yes, this this is approved or this can move forward regardless of our opinion about it, you know. And we may not even like it, but when those boxes get checked, we have an obligation to move it forward. But if something's brought before us and all the boxes aren't checked, that puts us in a quandary. But it also makes it very easy for us to deny to deny an application simply. Because it's not complete and that's what took place tonight. So if you're out there and thinking about something, check all the boxes. And if you don't know the boxes, just ask. Town staff will help to clarify that for you, I am sure. That's what they're there for. All right, anything else from anyone?
Just one other related update, thinking about town council, the the rezoning request for the property at one forty. Emma Sharp Road and Five Penland Road that this board considered at the last meeting, the public hearing will be this Thursday. In case anyone wants to watch.
Make a motion.
You have a motion by Mr. Foster to adjourn. Second by Mr. Wiggins, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And you are dismissed. Thank you, and we'll see you in August.